We have some echoing. Be sure to mute yourself unless you're speaking. That always is helpful. You ready, Roxanne?
I am ready.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Let's, please join me for the salute to the flag. Here, I'll wave my little flag.
How cool.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
flag
of the United States of America and to the republic
to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Thank you. Roxanne, roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Malone? Mr. Marshall? Mrs. McGrattan? I know she's here. Wait a minute, she's on mute.
Good news, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Present.
Mr. Washington? I see him, but I don't hear him.
Yeah, there you go, Mike.
Seven in favor, two absent.
Thank you. Are there any residents or property owners that wish to speak at this time? Hearing none. Just to make sure, hearing none. We have no informational items. Are there any committee commissioner board reports, any commissioners present? I see none. Comments of town councilors, or are there any comments? Councilors? Anyone? No comments? I would like to make-
I'll make one. There's a lot going on these days with protests and police and accusations of police brutality, which we know does happen. But today, I wrote to our police chief and I asked him to share a list of the training that our police go through. And I asked him for that because among the accusations are that police aren't paying attention. You know what all the accusations are. He sent me a long list of all the trainings and certifications and even audits that our department goes through. So, I'm not saying bad things don't happen to good people, but I think right now, we're not hearing enough about what our police go through and what they do to do things right. So, I just want to give them a vote of my support. I also plan to attend the demonstration this Saturday, still getting details on it, but I plan to attend it just to show that I do care about black lives and that I think they do matter, but at the same time, I stand with our police department.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from councilors? Anyone? I would just like to make a quick comment. I think I can speak on behalf of the town council that we're certainly in universal agreement that what happened in Minneapolis was a tragedy and the very worst example of racism. For anybody concerned about Ledger, and I see things mostly online, I would invite you to call anyone here by phone. Call 464-32033 and talk to Roxanne, who will give you any one of our phone numbers and the best way to reach us. While I love Facebook, you all know that, I love Facebook, it's a resource to disseminate information. It's not the platform that I choose to have meaningful dialogue. So, this is an opportunity. Every life has a story. I'm happy to hear yours, hear about yours and share mine, just not on Facebook. Call me. Anyone else this evening? Okay, moving on. Let's see, I will entertain a motion for review and approval of prior meeting minutes. Let's do May 27th, May 29th and June 1st together, if somebody would make that motion, please.
Does Council Dombrowski make the motion?
Motion's been made by Council Dombrowski, is there a second?
Council Ingalls, seconds.
Motion's made by Council Ingalls. Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Let's see, you have your communication list. Let me make sure I'm in the right order here. Communication list, I have no referrals. Let's move on to committee and subcommittee reports. Admin, anything to report?
Admin met tonight, we have several items that will be coming to the council and including resetting a public hearing for the dog leash ordinance, combining a couple of ordinances regarding the pension board, some tweaks that are being made to our Youth and Social Services Board. I think that's it from admin.
Any questions for admin? Moving on to finance. Council Som?
Finance, thank you. Finance met last Wednesday, June 3rd at 5:00 PM via video conference. The committee discussed a request from a local business that has suffered a severe downturn in revenue due to the COVID-19 pandemic for a possible abatement of taxes. And the committee deliberated about how to support the local business. And after much discussion, the committee and several other councilors present agreed that while they were sympathetic with the business owner's situation, the abating taxes would set a very dangerous precedent for the town. And that other businesses and even out-of-work homeowners might also expect to receive an abatement should any person or business receive one. And also that drawing the line would be purely arbitrary and likely indefensible. And that even though the vehicles owned by the business have been taken off the road, it does not shield them from taxes. The council does not have the authority to waive interest and penalties on taxes.
You can't hear this, right?
Except under governor's executive order. And that a threat to the tax base would be transferring liabilities for the cost of running the town to other taxpayers. Councilors also felt that this is an issue that should be addressed by the state, not the town, and that the town is already facing a substantial loss in revenue due to huge projected state deficits next year. The council has also briefly discussed other programs that might be available to assist the business owner, including the Paycheck Protection Program, the Economic Impact Disaster Loan Program, and possible future federal programs that have not yet been developed. Therefore, the committee decided they should respectfully decline the request. And everything else is on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Som, any questions for finance? Hearing none, moving on to land use, Council Dombrowski.
Land use met last week. The one item that we had on the agenda for tonight, which was the little keys that we discussed, we subsequently found out that they had not been reviewed by the individual boards and commissions, so we will not be acting on that tonight. And it'll be going back to land use once we get input from each of the boards and commissions. The only other item that was discussed was a request from the Tri-Town Trail Committee to have a field walk of what's been done so far in the Tri-Town Trail from Preston to Joe Clark Brook. And I will be scheduling that hopefully either this weekend or next. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for land use? Hearing none, let's move on to liaison reports. Let me stop, I'm just gonna do this a little different, I'll start up at the top corner of my screen. Councilor Som, do you have any liaison reports?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Council Ingalls? Council McGrattan, anyone? No liaison, well, I'll talk about the farmers markets since I'm the liaison. The farmers market is off to a great start. It's a little unusual, but it's going fine. I was there tonight, they had a good crowd. It's, I really miss being able to talk to people in the community. I think that's the one thing that's missing from it, because you have to get in line, go around the circle, and then pretty much leave, because you're not supposed to be standing around chit-chatting with people. And that's what I like to do best. So, I'm sorry for that, but I think as each week goes by, things will open up a little bit more. The vendors seem very, very happy. Most of the other farmers markets in the area are doing drive-up farmers markets where you actually drive up in your car and go from vendor to vendor in the car. And I have heard that the patrons don't love it and the vendors don't love it. They seem to be happier with our setup. So, stop by, it's a different experience. And some of your neighbors you won't recognize behind a mask, that's the other, that's the other big problem. If somebody says hello to you, you're not sometimes quite sure who it is. But anyway, it's going well, so thanks for the opportunity to speak about that. So, moving on, Mayor, you're up.
Yes, I will keep it moving along. Town Hall reopened Monday officially to the public. We are fully staffed, we're open. If you do come in, you will see some substantial changes in the way we're doing business and the plexiglass partitioning, which is not as friendly as I would like, but that's what we've got to do. And so, we've done a good job and I commend Public Works and Sean Rusick for his tremendous efforts with his team to get us there. So, that's important. The Bill Library will be opening on Monday, officially on Monday, the 22nd. I say Bill Library in particular because we still do not have enough plexiglass to outfit the Gales Ferry Library at this point. I have said that plexiglass right now is kind of like toilet paper a month and a half ago. It's very difficult to get. So, we are still trying to get, we're still waiting for our second order of plexiglass. And once we finish Gales Ferry Library, that too will reopen. As Counselor Som's mentioned, there is a peaceful protest on Saturday from noon to 2:00 PM. A young lady, a young Ledgerd High School graduate has orchestrated that, she's done a nice job on that, so I hope that that goes off well and safely and peacefully. Jim Mann, hats off to him, he has been working tirelessly since the COVID crisis. And the next heavy lift, which will be a combination of myself, Jim Mann, and Marcia, is our first round of FEMA funding reimbursement is due at the end of this month. So, we have to put together a good bit of paperwork to submit to that, and that will get us 75% of everything that is approved. And then, the state of Connecticut actually has funding as well. And we then apply to Connecticut, and that's kind of like gap coverage, so that hopefully will cover the 25%. Paving projects are going really well so far. Sherwood Forest turned out really nice. We were able to, if you've been to the farmers market, you have seen where we milled the Sherwood Forest subdivision, and then they rolled them out right there for the parking area for the lower town green. That's gone well, they're working on Ash Drive and Amber Circle next. You also may have seen some substantial patching on Vinegar Hill Road. Steve Maslin was dissatisfied with, not the work, but there were some issues with some of the blacktop loads that came in. And I think he called it, "It was ravelling." But it was done under warranty work, so it cost us nothing, and those patches are tremendous. So, again, our pavement contractor stood behind his work and did that for us at no cost to the town. So, I think, given the situation, I think things are really good. I would also thank Roxanne for accepting the deputy treasurer position once again. Nancy's last day is not this week, but next, and I will be sad to see her go. She has served the town of Ledger incredibly well. And I wish her and her husband Al well, and as they enjoy some retirement time and hopefully the winds stay down and the sun stays out and they can get out on their boat and enjoy it. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Hearing none? Let's see.
Excuse me, Ms. Davis? Is that open to the public, or is that just councilors?
It is not open to the public, that opportunity was at the beginning of the meeting.
I apologize, I logged in late, this is my first time to a meeting. I did have a question, if we're able to address you at the end of the meeting, if there's time, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we can do that at the end of the meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Let's see, we have no old business, would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing none, I'll move on to admin, Counselor Ingalls.
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Martha Reynolds, R. 1684 Center Groton Road, Ledger as an alternate member to the Cemetery Committee for a three-year term ending April 26, 2022, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Anderson.
Is there a second?
One second.
Governor Dombrowski?
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? I would just say, I know Mrs. Reynolds personally, she's a delightful lady, she'll be a wonderful addition. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan? She's here, I think she's just muted, let me see if I can unmute her. Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
And Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. We will move on to finance, Counselor Som.
I move to appropriate up to $10,169.98 from account number 210-90305-58915, CNR, and designated to purchase computers in Sonic Wall, which is a firewall for the Emergency Operations Center.
Is there a second, please?
Second, but there's more to the motion.
Oh, in addition, I'm sorry. In addition, upon receipt of NESF Regional 4 grant funding reimbursed account number 210-90305-58915, CNR, undesignated.
Second. Counselor Ingalls, seconds.
Thank you. So, this grant is for our Emergency Operations Center, which is located at the high school. We have a firewall which is fairly outdated. We need new servers and PCs. The funding is coming from an emergency management grant, which we have applied for and received funds for in the past, but we have to spend the money upfront and then be reimbursed. It's a 100% reimbursement, much needed, especially the firewall. And Chairman Davis, I know Jim Mann is present, and he made the request, so if he has anything to add or correct, please speak up, Jim.
Jeff, Bill, I didn't hear you, I had to chase the dogs. Sorry.
Was there anything you wanted to add about the motion or the request?
Okay, this is actually a grant that is eligible through the NESF that I didn't even know existed, because I had very little or no turnover. And I was able to get an extension for it. And what this will do is basically upgrade the EOC, which is woefully outdated. I mean, we have Windows 97 on some of the computers. We're way out of date. And we get this done, we get the bill into the state by September 30th, we get 100% reimbursement. That's huge, because I did get a $25,000, or I put in for a $25,000 grant through the same fund for next year, that'll give us a little more wiggle room to finally get things up to date down there, because the EOC was based on drills. The EOC should be based on reality, something happens tomorrow, it should be ready to go. And it's not right now. You know, I had Regina and Justin down there, and it took almost two days to get the place running again. That's not the correct way to do business, I'm sorry. And this is a good thing. It's 100% reimbursement.
Any questions?
Can I just add to that quickly? So, the Nuclear Safety Emergency Fund, that is the grant that we are not just applying for, we're already approved for it. So, it's kind of a foregone conclusion in this case, but this one too is administered by Demis Region 4, so that's our local assistance in Colchester that handles this for us.
And they have been very good, because I didn't know this existed, because I had very little or no turnover before I took this job. And, you know, when I called them, they're like, "Hey, you've got to get something going real quick." And I was able to find a documentation, and I talked to Fred, we were able to get, you know, the documentation to request an extension. So, we have that money. As a matter of fact, my extension was a little bit over, but because we didn't spend all the other money out of the other funding, they actually granted the whole thing. This is a good deal for the town, and it's a 100% reimbursement. So, that'll save us money next year to continue upgrading things, which is also going to help out with our, quote-unquote, "soft" EOC, to get things going again around here. We shouldn't be ready for drills, we should be ready for a real event.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
And Mr. Som?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, next item. Thank you, Mr.-
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
Folks, care if I bail out real quick, I gotta get the rest of my siding on before it starts to rain, or I'm gonna be in real trouble.
Yes.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Have a good night.
This is Counselor Som, I move to adopt a proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 water operations budget in the amount of $1,425,861.72.
Counselor Ingalls, seconds.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, please, Mr. Som.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. This budget has already been voted on and approved by the town council. We found an error in one of the numbers in the budget, it doesn't change the amount, but we wanted to vote on it again to make sure that we put forward the entire budget complete and accurate. It was a single number that was off.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, next item, Mr. Som.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I move to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget in the amount of $60 billion, $135,758 comprised of a general government budget of $26,946,338 and a Board of Education budget of $33,189,420.
Counselor Ingalls, seconds. Discussion.
So, this budget was presented at a public hearing virtually last Monday night. It has been worked on by the town council, I won't go through all of the steps that we've taken since March, and the general government and the Board of Ed in the months before that, but significant amount of work has been done. The council felt that a zero-mill increase is appropriate this year. The Board of Education budget was passed, was approved or adopted by the town council unchanged. The general government budget is actually a reduction from last year, and it will result in a negative tax increase. If revenues hold, as they are expected to. I want to thank the mayor, staff, or education, the members of the finance committee, and all the councilors who attended the finance committee meetings in March. This is a well-thought-out budget, and I think it's responsible, and I look forward to your questions.
Any further discussion? I should say that when I say any further discussion and there is none, it's because it's happened already. And we've discussed this budget at length at a number of meetings. And I wouldn't want anybody to think that it hadn't been well-vetted, many changes, and we find ourselves here this evening. I think we're all disappointed that this cannot go to a vote because of the governor's orders. And we would have preferred that, I think I speak for myself, but I think I see a lot of nodding of heads, that we would have preferred to have it go to a vote. But at any rate, this is what the cards were dealt with. So, with that, Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, Mr. Som.
I move to approve, I move to say a rate of 34.09 for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Bill, that's actually an error.
Right, that's what I would say.
It's not 34.09.
Fred just put up on the chat, it's 34.97.
Right. That's our current 35.06 minus .09.
Yeah, 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 minus .09, okay.
More than nine tenths, but-
Yeah. It may be longer again, Mayor, I-
What is the mill rate?
So, what should be in the motion- So the the what should be the in the motion is 34.97.
And that's a reduction of point 09.
Point 09 mils.
Okay. So so I'll just read the motion again. I move to approve and set a mill rate of 34.97 mils for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Counselor Ingalls, seconds.
Is there any discussion?
I would just add that this will represent a $9 decrease for every $100,000 of property. So if you have a $200,000 home, your taxes will go down by $18 in the coming year. And that's if revenues hold.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Item number, oh, no, not number six. That would be you, Mr. Psoms.
Yep. I move to authorize the mayor to submit a federal transportation fund 5310 grant application in the amount of $70,000 to purchase a handicap accessible van for the Ledyard Senior Center. In addition, appropriate up to $15,400 from CNR undesignated to provide the required local share to purchase the van. And further, upon the sale of the 2009 van, appropriate to proceed to CNR undesignated.
Counselor Ingalls, seconds.
Discussion, please. I think we've already discussed. Well, no, that was in the finance committee.
Well, we did it fine. Yeah. So so we have two senior center vans. One is a 2009, which is the oldest one. It has 91,000 miles on it. Our newest one has 51,000 miles on it. And we are obtaining a grant that we think may not be available next year due to state state budget situation. The both vans are beyond their technical useful life. However, many of us have owned or operate cars with 51,000 and 91,000 miles on them. But these these two vans are carrying seniors, and we do not want to risk a breakdown of either one of those vehicles on the highway. So for those reasons, we think it is responsible to purchase a new one. And again, it's an 80 20 match, so the town's cost is $15,000. And we'll get some of that between 4,000 and $7,000 back when we sell the old one.
Any further discussion?
Chairman, can I just add one quick thing? Can I add one quick thing?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I know we talked about this before. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, too, that the newest van, so the 2013 van that we have, if if we actually get this grant, the 2013 van is allowed to travel out of the state of Connecticut. The newest van, for whatever reason, and I don't understand the reasoning exactly, cannot leave the state of Connecticut for a specified time period. And I think it's maybe three years. So for the senior center, you know, when they make trips to Newport, and there's a some sort of, you know, a concert venue by the sea over in Charlestown or something, they technically can't take that one. So that's where keeping the older one is always beneficial for us, because we can take it to Rhode Island, which is 15 minutes away, essentially.
Mayor, what's the reasoning for that? That makes absolutely no sense at all.
I don't think so either. I think that, given that it is for seniors and for potentially handicapped people, why wouldn't you want them to take the safest newest vehicle when traveling out of state? I don't understand. And I'm going to have to look into it more as to why the federal transportation grant reads that way.
Thank you. Roxanne, because actually Rhode Island is closer to a lot of places that they would be traveling to.
Sure is.
State. So.
Sure is.
Okay. Any further questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Item number seven, we are not going to act on. It needs to go to the various land use committees before we can act on that. And so at this time, I will move residents and property owners to this point in the agenda before we adjourn. If there are any residents and property owners who wish to speak at this time, please state your name and your address.
Chairman Davis, my name is Chris Black, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Nicole. We live at 5 Allen Lane in Gales Ferry.
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay. First, I just I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mr. Psoms, I appreciate you commenting on the upcoming protest, or peaceful rally, whatever you want to call it. I respect Ms. Ms. Davis, your hesitation for a dialogue via Facebook. But I would like to inquire about, does the does the board or counselors intend to make any type of unified statement? And who intend who would who intends on attending the rally if if at all? I certainly support the Ledyard Police Department. All of my interactions with them and my wife and my family have been very professional and very courteous. We are seven year residents here. We migrated from New York, and we love it, and we plan on never leaving. And I also would like to know if the mayor intends on attending. This issue is very near and dear to our heart. I will I will tell you, my wife is black, and our children are biracial. And we would just like to get the council's position and where they stand, and is there going to be a unified statement from both the council and the police department on the issues at hand? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not I do not plan to make a statement beyond this statement I made. If any town counselors would like to make a statement, I did give them that opportunity. If they wish or if we wish to make a joint statement, we certainly could do that in the future. I had not intended to do that beyond my statement. When I started the meeting by saying we're in universal agreement that what happened in Minneapolis was a tragedy and the worst example of racism, and also that if we would like to have a discussion, we would ask that you please just call us, and we would be happy to set something up with anyone, any group that would like to speak. To answer your question, personally, I am 75 years old. I haven't been to the grocery store since March 20. I do not intend to be at the rally. And if anybody else would like to speak at this time, although we, let me just say this, if you've attended town council meetings in the past, we generally don't get into dialogue. But I appreciate your concern, and I appreciate your respectfulness and your I appreciate the fact that you asked if you could speak. And so if any councils do have anything to say, I'd certainly give them the opportunity. Normally, we don't get into dialogue, because this is while it is a public meeting, it is not a meeting of the public. But I tend to always give just a tiny bit of leeway there. So if anybody has anything to say, certainly they're open to say that, and I'll let it go there from there. Anyone?
This is Counselor Washington.
Yes.
I will be attending with my family. As everybody here maybe probably knows, my wife is of German descent, so she's blind and blue eyed. I have two biracial kids during the high school. I've been in the Ledyard Town system, school system since 74. I've seen a lot of changes have taken place. I think Ledyard is in a very good place with this police department. I've seen the growth in the police department. I think some one of the best things that happened with the department was to switch over to its its own police force. I think we have great leadership in in the town of Ledyard. I don't I I personally believe, through my experiences in town, that we're in a much more unique position than a lot of places, where it's more like a community policing versus a what I would call a combative policing. So yes, I will be there. I think we do. My personal opinion is there is a problem in the country. I don't think our cops are bad. There's a lot of police officers do a lot of things that are good. The problem is they need some of the resources are being are being shrunk. And let's be realistic, you have a lot of good officers, and just like a barrel of apples, you may have a bad apple in there. And as we talk about those officers, and this is not going to be, people aren't going to like me saying this, but when you talk about the good officers, and you have that bad officer, we have to get past as a police culture in which the officers that are out there who get called out to something that's going to be very bad, which puts their lives at risk, and then they, in essence, have talked about or reported a fellow officer, and now their concern is when they go into that drug dinner, wherever they go, what will happen to them as far as their backup goes? That's a separate issue from, and it's great with the I'm going to go, I love the talks, you'll find out. I'll try and keep this short. This is an issue where we're trying to where we need to address the issues within the police department with particular people and the procedures in the culture of the police department. Not all police departments are bad, and not all police officers are bad. And that I think everybody can can rally around. I think everybody wants to get a better police system. And going back to Ledyard, as I close this out, is I think Ledyard is in a very good place relative to our police department. And I'll leave it at that, and I will see you on Saturday.
Anyone else have any comments?
Chairman, I'll add in two if you if you might. I I agree, Chris and Nicole. And Nicole, I thank you for your application for social services. I've received it. I've read it. And when we return to a more better state of normalcy, we will start meeting. And I would like to meet with you. But in regards to the situation at hand right now, you know, when I when I see things like calls for defunding police departments and things like that, to me, and maybe in some instances, it may make sense, but I don't think it's it's not a realistic approach to to defund the police. I met with the chief of police and after after the situation in Minneapolis, and I said, one of the most meaningful changes that could come out of this is that when you have an officer that does bad, the police unions cannot support them. And that's a huge problem, not not necessarily in Ledyard, but in police departments in general, is that the unions protect them. And and I understand there is a need to protect their union membership. But I think in the case of when somebody has done something heinous or as horrible as what just happened in Minneapolis, the doer of the evil act needs to be put out on an island, and they do not get that protection that's afforded by that union. So to me, that's the meaningful type of change that could and should occur as a result of what has happened.
Mayor, I was going to make that exact same comment about the union, the unions protecting. And that's going to be a very difficult change to make, but I hope there is some way to make it. That I think that is huge, because I I'm sure that that has happened in many, many situations where where there is someone that should go, but they don't go because of because of the protection that they're given. So that is one I think many of us could could agree to.
It's a cultural shift.
Yeah, huge cultural shift. I think it has if it happens on a national level, where people say, look, we have to change this norm, then I think we're going somewhere positive.
And with that, thank you again for attending. Please come again. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion's made by Mr. Dombrowski and seconded by?
Mayor McGrattan.
Counselor McGrattan. This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.